Okay, we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is the Jefferson Township Board of Trustees' Work Session. It's Tuesday, December 21st. Time is 6:00 PM. Will you all stand for the question?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, and our in the book of liberty and justice for all.
Just thought I'd have a moment of silence. Our military firefighters, road workers, sheriff deputies, they serve our community here and abroad. Thank you. Requiem of Serbs?
Justin McLeod.
Present.
Justin Mann.
Present.
Justin McLeod.
Present.
Requiem present. The agenda is relatively wide open. Does anybody have old business?
He sent me an email about signing. He stopped them. He stopped them from financial paperwork, I guess, a little while. I haven't seen it still today.
Well, we got it here tonight. Part of the reason you haven't seen it was Peterson and the leasing company were going back and forth on final language. And that just got worked out. And you were supposed to be part of the paperwork loop. The chief had the paperwork for about a week. Mr. Ball, when you never went in to sign it?
Well, yesterday he's pouring out the new make-up Friday. I tried to do it yesterday, but missed it. I'm sorry.
So do you want to take care of this now?
Well, the reason why I asked is because I guess I needed to see what it was because this purchase is not gonna, I mean, the expenditure is not gonna happen before 2023. That means I need some, first time a piece of paper, I need some kind of guarantee that that money is gonna be put in the budget. We're gonna have that money because that's what the agreement says, that we will have that money in the budget in 2023 available to make the first payment or 2024, whatever that would be.
Actually, I brought this up in a previous meeting that I had, least two. Polar specific language. What that says. It's required in Ohio, we have to have a non-appropriation clause. So if the money's not appropriated, we have an out. Now, he did put in there that's frowned upon, but that is an out. So that objection is addressed by that termination by non-appropriation clause. So that covers us.
So we order a $659,000 tanker. And then we don't have the money. And so this company is gonna be out of their payments. And we'll have to find a way to give it to them because we ordered it. And this would allow us to get out of it.
Basically, you surrender the fire truck and they're gonna sell it?
We owe anything though because you know, sometimes, you know, you're feeling repossessed and that you're gonna get exonerated as a whole amount, you're still gonna owe something.
That I'm not sure of. But I would tend to think if it's not appropriated, how they can hold us liable for it. And some of the language that Peterson and the leasing company were going back for had to do with the language of obligations in there. And I think everybody was copying on that.
I wasn't. I wasn't. And that's what I said, I had to do what was, you know, you said there was an update. I never saw the update. And that's the concern I have is what's going on before I sign that piece of paper. Is it in, is it in this thing that we're signing? Is it in the contract or is it?
Yes.
Is this in the contract or something else is in the contract?
You got the whole file order, right? Actually, no.
No, I just have a piece of paper you have in mind.
This is the whole, this is the whole file. You're gonna need a magnifying glass for that. That's the paperwork. And if you decide to sign it, it needs to be in blue.
This is the same, it's the same. I just have a problem with the way this is written. It says, "You have been mildly appropriated by a leasing for search purposes and are in treasury of a leasing during the process of collecting to the credit of appropriate form." But we're not going to do that until the year until we have to make a payment. Twenty-two, twenty-three, or twenty-four. So how can I find something that I may not even be with? And the reason I said that is because I have a resolution that I want, I want to ask you guys to sign to cover that. And this was a while back when we did another, when we were going to do another contract, the road run. I asked Peterson for these words for that, that same purpose. You can read the verbiage.
No. I can't find it. So verbiage is resolution you made?
I sent it out to you guys. That's what I'm saying. Yeah. Do you want me to read it or something?
I don't know. I feel what you're talking about.
Well, yeah, because I sent it to you guys. It says, "Whereas the Board of Jefferson Township accepts the proposal from Setman Corporation to manufacture a new 2021 engine tanker and whereas the Board of Jefferson Township selected the financial package from leasing to incorporate to fund this project and whereas excepted for the financial here for an assumption, engine tanker will require expenditures in 2023 or 24 which cannot be budgeted at this time. Therefore, being resolved, the Board of Trustees for Jefferson Township hereby access to properly budget and encumber whatever township's money will be required to fulfill the township obligation under this financial agreement and all approved past financial agreement currently obligated and approved by the Board of Trustees for the future."
I'm not touching that without least two's legal department looking at that because I think that's gonna conflict with everything that them and Peterson have been going back and forth on.
Well, you can have them look at, that's fine, but I'm not signing that paperwork. It's not what I'm, my is gonna be. So we can go back and forth and ask them.
We can drag this out indefinitely. I mean.
I mean, you're not gonna give me to sign something that hit me in the head and say that I'm gonna do that one. I don't have any protection. So that was, that was my comment on, I don't know if you want to call that old business.
So.
Why do you think that resolution conflicts that, the leasing verbiage?
Well, number one, you got a non-appropriation clause. So I'm not touching it.
Non-appropriation.
Least two looks at it because it may conflict with the deal. For a $600,000 deal, let the lawyers look at it.
I agree with that, but you're saying a non-appropriation clause. What, from what I, and I'm not a lawyer, but from what I understand, how I understand that is a way out. And why, are my people think of a way, how to get out of this? I don't want to get out of it. But it's saying that the financial institution, least two, whatever the name is, is asking us, you need to make sure you have extra $900 in your budget these years to make this payment. I have no problem saying I won't do that. I'm not looking for a way to get out of it. I'm looking for a way to make it work. Am I understanding right? What's that clause mean to you? The, what's that, how do you understand that verbiage?
Some of my understanding with it would be if a levy was lost or something like that.
Levis are.
But this is an Ohio law thing. So I mean, Peterson would have the color and the intent on that. I'm sure there's some opinions out there on these. But in the state of Ohio, that's standard paperwork on these types of leases.
All of our fire levies are ten.
So you're.
We're not completely.
Right, permanent levy. So you're saying that a while back on another financial obligation, the manual asked you, gave you those words and do that. So it should be real easy and in a matter of no time at all, hey, will you apply this to this paperwork? And this gets seen rocking and rolling. And once that happens, call me, text me, and I'll make arrangements, get in here, go sign it.
No, I'm not touching it. I'm not gonna look at that as is without them looking at it.
I just said, let the legal look at it. He wrote it.
Okay, so we gotta, we don't take a lay.
All right. Well, the delay is because of you. You said you weren't gonna sign it. You weren't touching it. I mean, why can't we just bring in front of that one trustee as well? You're one trustee, maybe the other two might be okay.
Well, without least two charging in on it, we can't legislate against the other.
Least two is not the legal person. I let Peterson ask.
Well, sorry. Somebody wants to put it on the table and we get into resolutions in the next meeting?
All right, so we have the chief, the chief, right. What fire engines do you have now to protect the township?
Uh, we, we have the new quick attack that the trustees purchased. And we have one of the Rosenbowers at Station 60. But we have problems with all of them. So we're getting quotes on repair two of the three because the three's got a cracked housing on it.
Okay, so right now, how many engines can you get up? If you have a structure fire?
Two.
And you have problems with one of those?
Well, one of the two.
Okay.
I have a question. How many people do you have to drive the engines or have a particular time? Do you have enough staff, another one?
We had nine on today. We got six tomorrow.
That's any given day you have nine, right? We got six tomorrow, okay.
We're, we're, we are a part-time department.
Right, I understand that.
And I would like to cut out as lot of the mutual aid as we can. Because we don't need mutual aid on half the rest we have. So if we have a second engine, we don't have to call Throckwood or New Lebanon.
But you talk about engines. If you don't have nobody to drive because you will have part-time, you only have part-time staff, you're gonna have to have an engine to add.
Let's hold mutual aid on certain type of structured fires, yes.
Okay, on the fire attack pumper, did we pay cash for that? Or did we finance it?
Quick attack. We financed it. I thought I sent you guys an email on that as well, but I could find.
Okay, so, so we are saying that we cannot purchase this second engine because we can't secure the $600,000.
So we paying 34? Paying $34,928 a year on quota. The next 12? Are the 12?
The quick attack?
Yes. Twenty, twenty, thirty-two. So that's.
I think it's five or seven because you couldn't do 10 because of the state law.
Well, so maybe it was nine.
Something.
Yeah, because you couldn't do 12. So it was nine, I think it was nine. So for the next nine, I can't tell you. We paid in 2031. They put me in, you paid in 2031. So that's 10.
What was your comment, man, on the second? Did you make a comment that we can't get the financing? Is that what you said? What was your question?
Is that, that's what I was asking, is that the question that Tracy?
No, we have, we have the financing. There's a glitch in the, in the verbiage of appropriating the money every year to make that payment for them. And first of all, they wanted to make sure it gets appropriated. And evidently, they want a way out of it. So there's come, there's a problem with verbiage in making sure, making sure the money is appropriated. And so fiscal officer is saying she doesn't want to sign the paperwork for the loan. The leasing company and the seller have come to an agreement through Nathaniel, when they're legal, they've, here's a re-verbiage and Jim has it. So we have that agreement. And now the fiscal officer is saying, I won't sign what I need to sign on that paperwork because I'm sticking my neck out in that I'm saying that we have that money appropriated. She can't speak for us trustees. Will we approve? So she was, she has paperwork that says that we will appropriate that money. We as a board are saying we will appropriate that money every, every time it is paid to make that payment.
What Tracy's saying is she's got a problem with this language here.
And besides, we got, we got the four intercept and the two green mountain ambulance lease that we're paying for the next one, two, three, four months a year for 2025. And that's $76,666. Then if we get that, that stuff then, then I forget how much that was.
Eighty sleeves?
And so when you add all that up, we're not able to get that much from the levies to pay. And if you buy anything else, you won't have money to cover that.
And then the first week of January, you guys have a better idea of do this.
For the, for the record, your levies generate $1.3 million without, and that's an 85% collection. So there's plenty of money to pay your payments.
Then tell me, you give me some exact number.
Well, you should because you stayed honored to give that to you.
We don't get one point, we don't get all that money in common store.
Oh, that's what the report says last week.
We don't get that, all that money, Mr. Wolf.
I know what's in print.
I know what's in the budget and you don't.
I know what's, yeah, because you won't let us see the numbers.
I don't, I have nothing to do with that. You guys don't pay the bills.
Trustees, trustees, you want the factual numbers, go to the accounting auditor and they'll give you the exact numbers so.
They don't have our budget though and they don't know what we buy. You guys go outside of here, you don't, they, the county doesn't know what we buy. Legal doesn't know what we buy. You cannot go into somebody that doesn't live, that's in the township that knows what you guys are buying.
All right, the Board of Trustees voted to buy this thing.
So why are you trying to get out of it? So why are you trying to get out of it?
I'm not trying to get out of it.
Yes, you are. You said you put a, had to put a clause in there to get out of it.
No, that is standard paperwork in the state of Ohio, Tracy. I didn't have any say on that.
For the record, on the Rosenbauer's first purchase, the paperwork had to be redone because the fiscal officer failed to do the paperwork correct.
And that wasn't my responsibility to do paperwork. That is not my responsibility to do any paperwork.
Trustees, I have the floor.
I don't care, I was talking and you interrupted me.
No, I asked for the floor.
Yes, you did. You don't, just because you asked permission, doesn't mean you cut me off.
Trustees, who had the floor?
I did.
Finish your thoughts, Mr. Wolf.
So the truck sat in the warehouse for multiple weeks and we, the public didn't get use of that random fire truck because of the screw up of the paperwork. Mr. Peterson stopped that because it required his signature. And the fiscal officer is on record, he had an email that says, you don't need legal review. The bank picked it up. And the bank came back and said, we're not authorizing a loan until we do it. We find out that one trustee's name was removed from the paperwork, not authorized by prosecutor attorney. Prosecutor attorney had to redo all the paperwork with the loan company.
He was not at the meeting.
Then, trustees, so what I'm saying to you is, that clause is in your first truck. It's in every truck purchase in Ohio.
That doesn't even matter, that has nothing to do with this cost.
That clause protects you if, number one, you run into financial difficulties down the road. Number two, your fiscal officer doesn't pay the bills. Number three, you go bankrupt.
Getting off the subject.
That's why that isn't, no, that is the subject.
No, it's not the subject. That's not why I brought this up. I'm the one that brought this up, not you.
Trustees.
You're not a trustee here in this township.
You have the floor.
You're not a trustee here in the township. Nobody was there. You're crap. Your crap is useless.
Finish your thought, Mr. Wolf.
So this truck.
End it now because he's talking nonsense.
That's why the voice raises because the person doesn't want the facts to him.
It's nonsense.
Facts are facts, they're in writing.
There are no facts, you have nothing. Prove it.
Trustees.
You have nothing.
If you're not listening to me, it's your choice to do that.
No, but you're worthless.
I'm advising you.
Why don't you just walk out the door because you're worthless?
Just go to your seat and go hear exactly what I said, be 100%. Go to Peterson.
Yeah, go to Peterson, we don't need to hear you.
I just told you this exact same thing that Peterson has on record.
No, you didn't.
So we had to redo the.
Show the record.
redo the contract.
Show the record.
And then approve the contract and finally we got the truck. It sat in the warehouse.
You got the truck, irrelevant.
It is relevant, it's relevant because at the time, your other trucks that you had now failed. And at one time around the fair, we had no trucks to protect the people in this township. We should have had that truck right away as soon as it was delivered to Ohio, so it would have paid. But it was held up. This is fact. I'm giving you the, the answers to what you, you don't have. And if you don't want any of that, I don't have to provide it. But I'm trying to help the trustees understand the facts in the case and not somebody's opinion. Because you had a clause in there for those multiple reasons for a township, a government. A city has the same clause. A village has the same clause, no matter what you're buying. Whether it's lead pickup machine, dump trucks, they're all financed the same. So my point is, the clause is required to be in there. It will be in there or you won't buy a truck.
That is not something I had, had it. I had it separated, or actually, at least two gentlemen pulled that out of the contract and thought that would help satisfy your concerns with that clause. So that's all it is. You can make your own decision on that. But this is a stall. Somewhere along the line, somebody behind the scenes changed their mind, that's why you moved off. When you didn't come in to sign the paperwork.
I, I work with Jim, that's bullshit.
How can you tell somebody how, why they didn't do something, Jim? You're always putting somebody's word because you're, you're working somebody's mouth. Just because you do it doesn't mean.
Unexplainable forces, why? We're spending three years buying a fire truck.
It's, it's because of you.
Oh, okay.
It's because of you didn't want to get from that company.
Working on the financing, actually, we're working on this all.
Because you didn't know what you were doing.
Let's calm down. Let's, so let's ask Nathaniel about the verbiage, this resolution that the fiscal officer wants taken care of. So she will sign the paperwork so we get this thing to happen. If he, if he wrote it and if that's, that's the case, then it'll be a simple, yes, let's do it. And we'll come in and sign that paperwork because this thing will definitely work.
Also needs to go to least two because their legal team's reviewing it. So you're changing the terms of.
But, but that has nothing to do with, that is an internal, that is an internal document.
You guys are making up your own rules for this deal, so they're okay with it.
Right past least two, that's an internal document satisfying that we as a board will make sure that appropriation's there the year the payment needs to be made. It's not due at least two, they want us to do that.
It has nothing to do with least two.
This is just a stall.
It's not, it's not, Jim, it's not.
No, it's not.
You guys are making up your own rules.
It has nothing to do with least two. It has everything to do with you not wanting to make that decision. That's what it has, everything to do with you not making that decision.
Have we looked at that?
Okay, so.
We're not sending it to.
I'm not gonna come in and pass a resolution.
We're not gonna send it to least two.
You're not?
No.
Then forget it. You're entering into.
Forget it, Jim, I guess we're gonna forget about the contract. Because you can't force me to sign anything.
So let's, let's work together.
Well, I'm already informed.
Let's stop the arguments.
You know what, I just told you.
Hey, hey, let's stop the arguments, let's work together, so.
No, well, this is taxpayer money, not yours, so this is crazy.
You can't force me to do anything.
I'm not trying to force you.
Yes, you are. Just like you stuff stuff down my throat. I am not signing the document until I get a guarantee that you guys are gonna put it in the budget. This has nothing to do with anybody but us here in this township.
You not willing to sign a piece of paper says that when we do the budgets in the years down the road, that even when we're gone, that the Board of Trustees will make sure that that money's appropriated for this purchase. You're not willing to sign a piece of paper that says that.
I'm not without any kind of legal.
Okay, so it's right past legal then. It's an easy solution, guys. Take that right past Nathaniel's desk tomorrow and we'll rock and roll, go on with it. Okay, next.
You're still on old business.
You got any old business? Anybody else?
I have, um. Bonfire Department Fund Certificate of Annual Election of the Board. You guys need to decide who you want to, and I don't know if Chief can explain any of that to you as far as what the Bonfire. But every year we have to pay this bond.
I work.
You, you guys need to decide who is gonna be the members. I gave you example of a previous year of who were the board members. One was Roy Mann and I think the other was Mike McLaughlin. And then you need a secretary.
There's no caution down on this board. Every city, every village that has a fire department has to be submit paperwork. And this is only good on an injury that the firefighter or EMS is killed in the line of duty. Or if they're critically injured and cannot return to their job. And usually within, in the line of duty have, if it's a firefighter or EMS, they get $275,000 from the state. And that's usually given to the family within a 14-hour period once the state's done.
So what is the requirements of the people that are on this committee then?
The committee just has to hear the facts of it.
Okay.
Usually the same day it happens. Or if it's in the middle of the night, the following day, that they have to hear the facts, then they notify the state. that they have to hear the facts, then they notify the state.
I think I heard about that in the OTA corporations.
They've had that for years.
We had, I think I went to a class on that.
Years ago in Pittsburgh, Ohio, it was used.
If you don't want to use it, that's for sure.
It was used for my father, he had his line of duty death, and so my family was very affected. Hopefully we don't have to use it.
So wait, we, now, how was that, is it Julie or is it?
Oh, that's her last one.
Julie, yes.
The secretary sheet has the previous one on, and put that as a sample, so you guys know. I have an idea.
Let's see what we got, Jim. Well, I would be willing to be on this thing again, whatever, part of the job, whatever it takes to make it happen. As you said, chief, I hope everyone had to be involved in anything, I forbid anybody had to be involved in this. But I'm more willing to be part of it.
And once the last, the secretary table, it looked like it said, is voted by the board. Whoever the board is.
Were you in? Were you in?
No, it was Lex last time.
What do you want to do to give? Other people out here do to give?
You know, what should I talk to him about when you phone tonight?
So we still need another member, this has got to be, we got a bill to pay of a hundred and fifty dollars. This has got to be turned in.
Do we have a blank form of these?
That's, those are the two people right there that already volunteered.
Oh, oh, okay, so the front page is the.
Yes. We need two trustees, that looks like, and then you four guys, then we determine who to say.
So they move the board member that, that, that fire department, this is, you should make that question. Sign this quickly.